Yep. Thank you all. So, welcome to the Boy Scouts tonight and welcome to everybody else that showed us, showed up to join us. I'm David Solins. I'm the vice chair. To my left, we got Bill Davis. He's our chairman. We got Kathy Bender. She's our Shiloh representative. And then we got Ken Stroud. He's the James Madison representative. And then we got Steve Zerimba. He's the chairman of the Economic Development Authority. He's going to be the moderator for us tonight. We're going to open it up here in just a few minutes. I believe the Boy Scouts were going to lead the pledge. Was that right? Or am I... Oh, okay. Never mind. I'm getting a deer in the headlights look, so never mind on that. But we will stand and have the invocation. Do you mind doing that? I apologize for putting you on the spot. And then we'll, I'll turn it over to, we'll do that, then we'll do the pledge, and then I'll turn it over to Steve. And the rest of the night will be run by him. So, we all join us.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this time to get together with the community as members of the community and just see what we can do to come together to resolve problems. Lord, we just ask for just peaceful communication, Lord, and just understanding tonight. Just give us clarity and direction in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation as a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that's said. I'm Steve Zerimba. I was asked to be the moderator this evening. To kick things off, just wanted to go over, I guess, go over a few ground rules as we get started. Just to ensure everybody has the opportunity to voice a question, I don't think that'll be a problem here tonight, but I still plan to cap the questions and responses to three minutes, just in the effort of efficiencies. We can certainly have follow-up questions as we move through those. Next, and probably the most important, under discussions such as these, sometimes the opposing positions can feel politically charged. The one thing that I ask is that we all remain respectful throughout the discussion, right? We're all here because we care for the county, the community, and its future. I guess I will turn this over to the, do you have opening statements you wanted to start with? And then we'll enter in?
Yeah. I, one of the things that we had on the itinerary was kind of for us to come down the row and each have some opening remarks. So, I guess we could just start on that end. Ken, would you like to go first? Okay. Ms. Bender?
I just want to thank you for coming out, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
I concur with that. It's always good when people that live in the county come out and show support. You get so much stuff on Facebook and some things that people say on Facebook, it's like, man, they haven't been watching a meeting for about two years, it doesn't appear. So, I was telling my colleague in the back that one of my friends was on there. We hadn't talked in a while, but he was on there complaining about the board supervisor saying, "We need to get rid of them. They did, built this and did that." And I'm going, "Dude, do you understand that we just got on the board like a year ago?" He goes, "You're on the board?" He didn't even know we was on the board. So, people don't pay attention, but, you know, and I always say, like, it's, I'm not big on complainers, but I am big on concerns. You know, complaining is, it's kind of like, you know, if you're, I'm the problem, you're the problem, and you've already made your mind up on that. But we're here to answer concerns and what we can do to make things better.
Thank you. I put together some stuff, but I think this is going to kind of come out in the questions anyway, so I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder or steal Steve's thunder by talking about that now. I will say, there was a questionnaire that got sent out across the county, and we got about 34 responses, which sounds kind of cool, but we got 30,000 people. So, relatively low response rate, but I think that's one of those things where you kind of have to sign up for King George alerts for you to have received this. And if you didn't, then that's, that's one of the things that you need to do is try to sign up. There were a lot of questions on it, you know, pre-arranged questions, I guess you should say. We got about seven pages worth of feedback. Some of it, a lot of it was just, you know, free-flowing responses, you know, questioning taxes, questioning, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? Like, one that always comes up is, you know, the courthouse, you know, why did we build such a big courthouse? Well, that was arranged and bought and dealt with before at least three of us were ever, you know, ever even on the board. You know, I get it, the courthouse costs too much. Wasn't our decision. Turn the page. Let's look to the future. But I do thank y'all for coming out tonight. You know, I hear stories like what Bill was saying about his friend that, you know, wasn't engaged. I'll be honest with you, before I ran for office, I didn't know what was going on either. You know, I would, every few years, I'd see these signs on the side of the road, you know, Ruby Brabo for, you know, King George Supervisor, Dale Sisson for Supervisor. And I'm like, I know him, I don't know her. I guess I'll vote for him, you know? So, getting up here and getting involved was pretty eye-opening. There's, there's a lot going on in this little, small county that shocks the daylights out of me, but it's, it's also been a lot of fun. So, looking forward to meeting with y'all tonight and having some nice Q and A, and hopefully we all come out knowing a little bit more about each other than we came in with.
All right. Thank you. So, as you said, I was going to speak to, I guess, the community survey here briefly. Don't know exactly what you had prepared, but in going through it, just in an effort to respond to those that did enter into the survey, I tried to, due to the overlap of some of the questions and comments, tried to narrow or derive that down to maybe four specific areas. The four main categories that were in response to the survey were budget and taxes, community growth and infrastructure, roadway and traffic safety, and public schools and staffing. So, I didn't want to just go through and read every question verbatim, so I tried to narrow, narrow those down to, like I said, four specific that I was just going to ask the supervisors to provide a response to that, and maybe that'll spur some discussion for me tonight. Once after, after the four, then we'll open up the floor, and it'll be the typical town hall. First question under budget and taxes. Can the board speak to the county's plan for debt control and the long-term tax impact from rising county needs and the potential loss of the landfill income?
Want to speak? Go ahead.
He picks me to be first, but that's okay. I can be first this time. You had talked about the long-term plan. That was one thing I brought up in the last meeting in my board comments about, we need to sit down after the first of the year and come up with a long-term plan of what we see as our capital improvements that really need to be done, and then figure out a way and a process of what's the most important to the least important, and looking at our revenue and trying to figure out what kind of business and what kind of income we need to bring in to be able to fund those projects and have them mapped out. A lot of localities do that one-year, five-year, 10-year, 15-year plan. Some even do more than that. But we need to have a plan. We need to relook at our economic development plan. Their comp plan needs to be revised, and there's a lot of things that we need to finally sit down and as a group, we can't always get everything we want, but we can come to a consensus, I know the board can, to come up with a plan that we get to feedback from our constituents and everybody to try to come up with a plan that everybody can agree on. They've done it in other localities. In Orange County, they came up with a plan where they put it to a referendum of where they would allow certain kinds of development, and it was voted on. So, now when people come, they're saying, "Hey, we voted on that. That's where development comes. That's where the houses come. That's where it doesn't come." And so, they have three areas. So, their development for houses and that is near Spotsylvania border. The middle is the government and schools, and then it's rural in the west. So, we could do something like that, just an idea, but we need to sit down and come up together with a plan that it is all agreed on. So, that is one way. And with that would also be the debt, because then you would decide where certain businesses go, industry, and then you would try to attract and come to an agreement of what businesses, industry, development we want in what areas, and then you would go seek out those people that matched it. I always love sports tourism, agri-tourism. I think it would work, especially that we live between two rivers, and I don't want to glow. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Question was, could the board speak to the county's plan for debt control and the long-term tax impact from rising county needs and the potential loss of the landfill income?
So, as far as the landfill income goes, I don't, we're probably looking at about 18 years before that's gone, and that's not even saying, they'd still have room back there to expand. But there's, you know, the biggest way for us to deal with any of that stuff is going to bring in business, right? So, that's what we're looking at. Right now, you're seeing infrastructure being put in when you look at, that's pipe being run by Hopyard, it's connecting all of our service authorities in order for us to bring in infrastructure. It's one thing to have land that's zoned for industrial, but no one's going to come here if you're not prepared for them. So, for years, we've been sitting back with no infrastructure put in to handle that. The board before us, they, we had almost a $17 million grant given to us from the state to put in infrastructure. For some reason, they sat on it for a couple of years. So, what we did, we immediately came in and started putting that into action, and what you're seeing, and that's why you're seeing that going in, that, as far as that construction, that development going in over there. And our ability to tie all the service authorities to put infrastructure in so that, so that those businesses out there actually have water, and they don't have to pay for that themselves, because they're not going to come here and say, "Well, you're going to spend $5 million on putting infrastructure in." They're just going to go to someone else who's prepared. So, we got to prepare for that. You know, as far as debt goes, one of the things that we did when we came in was, was how can we make our money work for us? We had like $40 million sitting in a checking account. Now, I don't know why we had that much money sitting in a checking account for years. It's making no interest. It's making no money whatsoever for the county. So, we immediately stepped down with the county treasurer with what could we do to change this? And we didn't get all the money because we don't have control over that, but we, the money, we did get a portion of that money invested. I think it made us over $1 million, right at $1 million. So, and that's, and that's just a portion, but if we'd been, if that money would have been in there all along, just think about how much money, wealth is when your money is making money for you. That's, that's wealth. It's when you have money and your money's now working for you. You're off on vacation, but your money's somewhere making money for you. And that's the kind of stuff that we're doing. That's, you know, we have businessmen up here, and that's what we do for business. And so, it's just, how can we take our county and make it profitable on its own, and by doing that, keep taxes down, things of that nature? You know, I saw one of the questions was about, you know, freezing senior citizens' taxes at a certain rate on their property taxes, which I'm totally for that. You get to a point where you're retired and your taxes keep going up, I think that those things should be frozen and stopped. That's a little off the cusp with that. But the landfill, we are renegotiating some terms with them right now as far as some things that were kind of left out, that were, that were losing us money. And so, we're getting back on track of getting that money back, and we're still steadily working on that.
So, we do bring in about seven, a little over $7 million a year from the landfill, but that contract has been modified 20-something times. We don't actually get to keep a lot of that money. There have been times where we're almost at the point of paying to have it here, you know? So, it's not like a financial windfall for us, but there, there is some benefit to having it, you know? And like, like Bill said, you know, we may end up expanding that and getting a little bit, you know, more life out of it, you know, down the road. But as far as like the approach that we've been trying to take to manage debt, we've been looking to try to bring in industry. I won't, I won't go back to what Bill was saying about the infrastructure and trying to tie it all together, but we're looking to try to have a balanced approach. Trying to have, you know, one or two big-ticket items, you know, that's going to bring in a lot of, a lot of revenue, but have as small of an impact on the county as possible, but also bring in some smaller businesses, you know, make it a nice place where people actually want to, you know, want to live here. Not just the cool rural scenery, but, you know, things to do. You know, Kathy had mentioned agritourism, which we've already kind of got, you know, the, the ground floor for that, but sports tourism. You know, I've, I've been wanting to try to bring in something like the Fredericksburg Fieldhouse. I feel like we can get kids from all over to, to participate in something like that. It's not going to be a huge fundraiser, but it will bring in some money, and it will give our kids something to do. I remember back when I was first running for this office, we had kind of a debate sort of forum, very similar to this over at Mary Washington. One of the questions that was asked of us is, "What are you going to do about the drug problem in the high school?" Well, my first response in my head, thank goodness it stayed in my head, was, "Well, that sounds like a school board problem," you know? And luckily, you know, it came down the aisle, and by the time it got to me, I'm like, "Well, I know what I want to do about it. I want to do something like a fieldhouse." You know, there are exceptions, but by and large, most of the kids that are in trouble, not the kids that are on the football team, the basketball team, the band, the cheerleader, whatever, you know, the kids that have something to do after school, they're staying out of trouble because they're busy. It's the kids that are bored usually that are getting in trouble. So, if we can do something that help, that help them out, so that kind of business, you know, that, that brings culture to our county, sports, fun, you know, and things like that. Yeah. I think that's enough for now.
This is, these are hard topics for me to stay within three minutes. So...
Or not. We don't know yet.
So, debt control, increasing county needs. So, all right. Borrowing, these are some things, borrowing versus using our own cash, okay? Because people talk about paying down our debt, and the county owes money. So, owing money isn't a bad thing, okay? It's not a bad thing. If you are looking at your, your household and, you know, you don't want to borrow money and you look at it as bad, that's up to you. That's your household, okay? But for the county to owe money's not a bad thing. Owing, having a certain amount of debt allows us to have a lower interest rate because we have a better rating, all right? That's, that's good for us. The other thing, if you watch the county meetings, you're, some people argued about, "We need to use the county money to pay down our debt. Pay down our debt." That's a not a good idea, okay? Because our money is making more money than the amount of interest we're paying on our debt. What does that mean? That means the accounts going up, not down. If we take the money out of the bank and we pay down the debt, we're losing, okay? It's hard for some people to understand, but it's a better, it's a better way. And, you know, if you need to talk about it, and then let me know, we'll try to get together sometime and talk about it. Kathy mentioned about, you know, agritourism. I'll touch on that briefly. We're between two rivers. Yes, you hear a lot of people talking, "We're between two rivers. We live between two rivers. We enjoy rivers. We enjoy the water." The problem is, is the county doesn't own the land on the river. That's the problem. So, whenever you look at doing something like for the county on the river, it's not going to happen until the county owns the land, okay? I'm talking about enough land. You want to put on a recreation area, you want to do these different things, you've got to own the land, okay? So, unless we take the land, somebody's got to be willing to sell it. If somebody's got, wants to sell some land on the river, that'd be beneficial to the county, cool. Let's, you know, probably talk to county administrator, let's get the discussion going. In the meantime, it's not going to happen until we own the land on the river. Regarding, you know, the increasing debt for the county, we have a limited control in our ability to limit the debt. Now, what do I mean by that? Well, whenever, you know, last year, whenever people voted for the, the new school, well, that was a big bill, right? It came to what, $57 million or something like that is what it was priced out. I mean, that's what we had to spend, but that's what it was. And the, the community, because it passed, so a majority of people voted for that. And so, what did they do? Whenever they voted for that, that then placed on us a need to come up with money to pay the bill, if, if we execute it, right? So, so what I'm saying is, we, I didn't vote for that. I wouldn't have voted for it. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't support that. But the population did, the constituents, some of them, somebody out there, they voted for it, the majority did, placing the burden on us to figure out how to pay for it, okay? And there should have been something in there saying that if you vote for this, then provide three ways you want to pay for it at the same time, okay? But that's how the, the, the debt goes up, and we got to figure out a way to pay for it. So, how do we do that? Since I came on the board, and I've said a number of times, I see, and I don't, I try not, I'm not a, an expert in everything. I'm not, I don't know everything at all. I stay out of, I try to stay in my lane and stay out of other, other, other areas, and I let other people talk about them. But whenever it comes to how to bring money into the county, I think I got a handle on how to do that. And, you know, it's, if you want to win big, you got to think big. So, small businesses, I don't have anything against small businesses. I haven't owned a small business, but a small business isn't going to be the thing that really takes us over the, you know, the hurdle of paying down the debt. It's not going to be small businesses. I don't know what the percentage is today, but at one point, over 95% of small businesses failed in the first five years. So, if you're betting on small business, what does that mean? You're betting on a failing team. Small business isn't the answer. I'm not against them, but you need to think big to win big. So, that's where we look at, at larger efforts to bring money in. The other thing is, is you don't have, you don't bet on one thing, okay? You, you need to be able to spread load that risk in the way that you accomplish that. And, and we're working on that. It doesn't mean I'm against small businesses, I'm not against restaurants, we need it, need those things, and they're good for us. It's just, that's not going to be the thing that really carries us across the finish line. Am I out of time?
We're, we're at the time.
Okay.
If you need 30 seconds, bring it to a close?
I'm sure there'll be questions.
Okay. That's later. The next category that was as part of the survey was the community growth and infrastructure. So, the question was, can the board speak to the recent approved commercial projects and the impact that will have on the water constraints that we're facing in the future?
The only thing I think they're thinking about is the data center, is the only thing, well, number one, that they're not taking any water to cool that system. You know, that's one thing that this board has stood by is that we're not going to make the mistakes that Northern Virginia and Stafford and people have made, which is allowing a data center to use good, drinkable, usable water by constituents just to cool their engines. It ain't going to happen. It's going to cost them 15% more to build, but they're billionaires. They can pay their 15% more to build. There's, there's, it's all right. You're at home. You're good. There's, there's cooling gel, there's air cooling, and there's, there's other ways of using purple pipe water, which is water that's not, you can't drink that water, but it's, and it's not been treated for enough that you can use it to cool those systems off. But that's what, you know, people mostly have heard about what we, with Amazon, how we came in first day and we shut down that performance agreement. And the reason, one of the main reasons why we did it is, number one, we didn't get anything out of the deal. We got zero, and everyone else is getting $100 million for their water treatment facilities, $150 million for their, for their systems and all this stuff, and we got nothing, literally. But one of the main things for me was, they, they had access to a straw, and they're going to be taking over 2 million gallons of water out of the Rappahannock River daily. And I came and said, "No, you can't. There's no way. Rappahannock River's number six on the endangered list, and I like to keep my river," you know? And there's some things that we're doing that are just, you know, people said that they want to save the environment, but there's some things we're doing it for the, the sake of technology to destroy it, you know? And that's one of them. So, I can tell you right now that no water consumption is going to be used for any of those things. And if you watch the meetings, we talk about that constantly. What was the rest of that question? What was the rest of that question?
So, these questions are...
I addressed the water, but there was another part to that.
Oh, just the wa... It was infrastructure. Speak to the recent, yeah, recent approved commercial projects and the impact that would have on water constraints.
So, we voted down a solar farm that was really big, and the reason why we did it is because the impact it was going to have on the environment. It was too spread out. It was crossing too many wetlands, crossing too many properties. There was just no way possible that someone's property wasn't going to get flooded, something wasn't going to happen, and I can't do that. So, we, we rejected it. It would, it's sad because it would have brought in revenue to the county. Those are some of the things that Mr. Stroud's referring to, that there's little hits that you can get that can bring in revenue. But if it comes down to our environment, it comes down to our water, I'm not giving it to them.
I think he, I think he nailed that one pretty good. Are y'all good? If we go ahead and move on to the next question, did you have something to add? Go ahead.
Because this one is my ballywip for the service authority, and I want to just give some people some updates of exactly what is happening. So, earlier it was mentioned about the, the money that the Senator Stewart had gotten from the, from the state in a grant that was also given to us by VDH, and they told us what we had to do with it. Previously, stuff wasn't done, and we almost lost the grant. And so, we worked hard last year, and I know I worked hard as doing the general manager job for a year and a half to make sure we saved that grant and had all these projects. It was hard. There was easements. Everyone in the county, the board, our staff worked really hard with the service authority. And you have to understand, a lot of people, some people would like the, the general fund of the county to help subsidize the service authority, but people don't realize that the county gives the service authority a lot of free services, like finance, procurement, community engagement. So, the, the residents do contribute to the service authority through the county's employees actually doing work, our county engineer for the service authority for no charge. So, the residents, all the residents do contribute to the service authority, and the service authority is going in a better direction. We have our new general manager who has background in all these topics, but those projects are in process. A lot of people see the lines going, that's not all fiber going in on Route 3. That's the service authority's project, and what it is, it's connecting Hopyard to Perkins Corner, so we can decommission an aging plant, Oakland Park, hopefully we're, can be next. And so, you operate three plants as opposed to five plants, which cuts down on costs. But that infrastructure we put, are putting in is going to help fund businesses, the schools, and help to have better quality for our residents and the ability to maybe have commercial development in front of Hopyard that Mr. Stroud has talked about many times. That infrastructure is being in place now, and it will be completed by January 1st of 2027, because that's the consent order that Perkins Corner has to go goodbye. So, that, it's just, it takes a long time to do the whole process, but it is in process. And we're getting new permits that are combining systems, and there's a lot in play right now that people do not realize. And, and going back when Mr. Davis talked about the Amazon deal, I was on the old board, but I was against it the whole time, and it was about the water, because a lot of the data that was used in the MOU that the service authority voted on in September of 2023 wasn't even the right data. We actually have a water supply plan coming, and I've been involved in that with Mr. Young, who's the county engineer, and that one shows that the data they were using to do a lot of the modeling was flawed, and they're fixing it right now. So, we have accurate numbers of what we did, and just so the public knows, that $600,000 they were going to graciously give us for the water we needed for our whole system wouldn't even have been for the courthouse permit, the data has found. So, those were flawed numbers. And when Amazon bought the Birchwood permit from, from Birchwood, they didn't talk about us, so they didn't, they got a minor modification and not a major modification, and if they had to have a major modification, they would have had to get public input, and it might not have been easy. So, there's a lot going on there, but as I have always said, I will fight for that water permit because that, the citizens of King George should be owning it, because in the Constitution of Virginia, the water should be the citizens of Virginia, not a corporation. And all of us believe that one very firmly, because that permit should be under our control, because when you own the water, it's for the citizens, not for a corporation. And I know it got preachy there, but that, that, I really believe that. But the infrastructure is coming in place. It just doesn't happen overnight, and it will be a benefit. There also is an engineering plan coming with Dogren to show how we can upgrade, well, it's come, but there's more to it, show how we can upgrade Dogren, the Dogren wastewater plant, to help service more areas and to, to, to do better economic growth for us. But it's in process right now, and that's why there was that $4 million bond that we went out for, so we can start making that improvements. But Mr. Hamilton is seeking grants also. It just takes time. And actually, county staff help with those grants. So, I just want people to know that. Thank you.
All right. Are you good?
Will you move on to the next question?
I have something to say.
Oh, go for it.
I just needed to catch my breath.
I'm sorry.
So.
I thought you were talking to an app.
On the infrastructure. Want to go whenever I said that borrowing money isn't bad. So what I would like to point out is that we haven't been in office that long, but the, the previous, you know, your previous supervisors, our previous supervisor, our previous county, okay? Whenever you start a business, say you want to start a wrecking service business, you own tow trucks, okay? Do you need to have a tow truck? And do you have the money to pay for it upfront? You want to start, you know, an IT business, you need to have computers. You need to have an office, you need to have things. Well, the county needed to invest money to bring businesses in. The county hasn't done that. Your money, our, our money was spent building county stuff. A courthouse, schools, firehouses, county things, okay? Instead of taking some of that money and saying, you know what? If I want to be able to pay for these things, I need to invest some now so I can make money to pay for these things. Because in your household, you don't just go and spend all your money on a vehicle and I have money for groceries. Okay? You gotta have a vehicle to get to work the next day, you gotta have, be able to buy gas, you have to look at all the things. This county hasn't done that in the past. They haven't looked holistically at how are we going to pay the bills in the future? So the approach that I have is we need to invest in the ability to make money to pay the bills so that our citizens don't have to. And that means we need infrastructure. Okay? And, and that was why, you know, I spoke about these things early on, and you needed to tie that water sewer in. That money should have been done, it should have been a long time ago, but there's other things the county could do to invest in infrastructure instead of spending money on, you know, growing the government. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to piggyback on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So he brought up something good, and I want to bring this up for the, for the Boy Scouts. So he's talking about investing money. Yep, you. So when he's talking about investing money, if you think about it, you, your parents have a credit rating, like, you know, when they borrow money, your credit rating kind of helps determine what the interest rate is. That interest rate determines how much you're paying back. So if I borrow $1,000 and I've got a really high interest rate, I may end up paying back $1,300. If I've got a really low interest rate, I may only have to pay back $1,100. So by managing my credit, by managing the amount of money I have, investing wisely, it keeps my credit rating low, I'm sorry, keeps my credit rating high, my interest rate low. Well, the county has what's called the bond rating, that's kind of equivalent to that. Now, in previous years, our bond rating, because of mismanagement, our bond rating had suffered a bit. We had, had gone down, our credit rating, if you will, had gone down. So that meant we couldn't borrow as much money, or we had to pay a much higher interest rate. In the last couple of years, because of the, the good management, the investment, managing our money, keeping some money in savings, blah, 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 our, our credit ratings now, Moody's, there's three different agencies that rate us. One of them is called Moody's. That rating is double A1. There's another one called Standard and Poor. I don't know why we poor, if you're talking about investments, but whatever. But that rating is double A plus, and then Fitch is double A. So we've gone up and we're doing very well in terms of managing our money, managing your money, and making sure that if we do have to go and, and borrow money for investing in schools and whatnot, we get a better credit rating because of it, a better interest rate. Thank you. So I have one more question from the community survey that I wanted to, to address before we open up the floor for questions. It was pertaining to roadway and traffic safety. Based on the discussions with VDOT, they will not maintain roads without an associated route number. What could be done to initiate the process to have a route number assigned to the service road in front of Big Dogs and Ace Hardware at Route 205 and 301?
I could actually answer that one because I had long discussions with VDOT and GIS about this, and it's actually a very unique, unique answer, and it goes back to when that was actually a circle in the 50s, and it was relinquished the easement, and it's very complicated. But right now, there is an easement from VDOT for, you know, to maintain the roadway, not on that part, but the owner of the property. And I want to say, if I remember, I don't have my notes in front of me, but it is the owner of the building where the hardware stores, it, it's their road, so they have to maintain it. And that's the biggest problem that people understand, is that it's not a VDA, VDOT road. That was given back to the landowner when the landowner purchased all that. And there is a GIS picture of the circle from the 50s to late 50s, and then you, they found it, the guys up in GIS are great. They found these old historical pictures, and then in the 60s, the circle was abandoned and 301 was expanded. And then they deeded basically the property owner to the original owners of, who built the cir, I think it was the Circle Market, and they're, forget the name, the Safeway? Yeah, it was whatever the market was, they're the original owners. That is correct? Yep. Yep, Circle Market. And that's where it came, and so it's very complicated, so it's not as easy as one, two, three. There, there is things that have to be done, and as you know, VDOT can sometimes be a little difficult, and they don't always listen, and they think we're thorough affairs. So that would be a little more complicated, but it's not as easy as one, two, three.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll open up the floor for questions. Anybody would like to come up, and please, please?
Based on what Mr. Stroud was talking about, think big, win big. So there's a direct correlation. Well, let me back up a little bit. Our kids are also our long-term investment. So when I came to King George in 2004, our school ratings were like fives and sixes, and it's been steady. I don't know what's happened over the past two, three years, but our elementary, for instance, Sealeston Elementary has dropped to a three. And that's a direct correlation to what the kids are learning, how they're testing. And I don't understand why, when this county got a lot going right for it. So if we're investing in the new elementary school, there's also something going on behind the scenes with the schools that we have right now, the three elementary schools, the middle schools. Our ratings are going down. So one suggestion I have, Hanover, I don't know what they did over the past five years, but their schools are in the eight, nine zones. So I don't know what their teachers are doing, I don't know what their superintendents, I don't know how they're doing what they're doing, but there's no harm in reaching out and go, hey, Hanover, how did you do that? And maybe we can, you know, correlate whatever they're doing and try and do some of that stuff with our schools. But our scores are in the dumpsters, and that's a problem. If we're investing in our kids, they're going to invest back in our communities in the next five, 10 years when they're graduating, they go to college or whatever. But if we're not doing right by them in the beginning, we got problems.
Ma'am, but before you go, can we get your name and your district?
Uh, Yvette White. I just sold my house in Presidential Lakes, so now I'm building with Western Homes off of Lambs Creek Church Road, so I know I'm in a new district right off of Myrtle and Lambs Creek Church. So that's a new district, but, but for me.
Well, it, it depends on, on what, if you're on the south side of where Igo Road is, do you know where Igo is?
Yeah, yes, that's still Presidential Lakes, so I think I'm.
Are you, like, if you go to Lambs Creek, passed Igo to get to your house?
Yes, well, if we're going off of Igo, we continue on down, turn right on Lambs Creek Church, and that's Green Heights subdivision.
Okay, that's James Monroe. Should it be James Monroe?
Okay, yeah. So again, Sealeston, just in the past two years, dropped from a five, they're now three. That's bad. That's very bad.
Right. Yeah, so I, I'm. I don't have kids in the school right now. It doesn't mean that I don't care, but, because I do. And to be quite honest, even whenever I had kids in school, a lot of it, I was in the Marine Corps, so I was a gom, and, and just wasn't around. It's something I care about. And I, I don't, I can't really answer the question. My, you know, I think that it's probably had something to do with all the things that were distracting the kids away from the core subjects. That was, that the schools got caught up in, just from what I see with the school boards and in a state with the DEI and all that crap going on, that was distracting the, the boys and girls bathrooms, all kind of crap that distracts them away from the core learning subjects. And it's basically, if you stay focused on your math, reading, and, and those type skills, then, you know, I think the scores are going to be up. But that's just my small piece.
Didn't the DI, DEI, that, that affected the entire state, didn't it? So like I'm saying, this, there's some counties that are skyrocketing and we're tanking, and so there's something.
So it, it, you're, it impacted everywhere, but it impacted others more than others. It impacted some more than others. So if a county, if a school board or schools, if a system seemed to adopt it rather than not adopt it, then it's going to impact them less or more. Does that make sense?
I, I don't agree. My granddaughter is five, I, I know 10-year-olds and 12-year-olds, they, they just want to know where to pee at. The classroom versus where they go to the bathroom at, adults are more concerned about it than the kids are. The kids are in the classroom to learn, so if you tell them to use that bathroom, they're going to use that bathroom, and then they're going to go back to the class. So it's what they're being fed, what they're being motivated to learn. And, and it's not just, it's not just the teachers in the school. I mean, of course, parents got to do their part as well, without question. But there has been a, I'm, I'm seeing a drastic change in a very short period of time. And I'm, I'm trying to put my finger on the King, King George is just as great a county, again, as Hanover, comparing apples to apples. So what is it, what's going on with our schools that's not happening to these other schools?
By chance, have you spoke to the school board, asked them?
Uh, I've, kind of. And there's, there's not, not, not a straight answer. So one of the things I do know, because I've been a Realtor forever as well, I'm, I retired Homeland Security, but that's a separate issue altogether. There's a direct correlation between property values and grand, and fantastic schools. The better the schools, the better, the higher the property values, without question. Hanover's county's properties have been skyrocketing, and I see a correlation between the schools and the properties. There, there definitely is. People will pay more money for a house if the school system their kids go to are fantastic schools. It's just, that's just how, how, how people like to buy homes if they have that, that opportunity. Yes?
I, I could, I could tell you that, um, the prices here, they've jumped 16%.
Well, of course.
It just in King George, we, we are, we jumped higher than anybody else in the re, in this immediate region just in one year, okay? That, that's a fact. That, and we have people that move here just to go to our high school because of our JRET C and programs that we have there, and the CT program, stuff like that. We have people moving here just to go to that school to be part of some of the programs that we, that we do. I don't know what sys, um, system you're talking about. I know the, the scale that they use over there for accreditation is, is scale out of 100, so I'm not sure what the three.
The GreatSchools.net, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's across the entire country.
Yeah, so, so I think what, what maybe part of the problem is, is we also are using a, um, we have an entirely new accreditation system this year.
This year?
Okay. So, so it's very, very hard for them to, to measure that, and that might be part of what you're seeing. I'm just talking to the superintendent from the school, because this is kind of a school board related question more than it's us, but the prices here in King George, the houses have, have been skyrocketing. I mean, that's what, people can't afford to live here. You know, people can't graduate college and go buy a house, you know? Affordable, affordable houses, townhouses that were getting built here were $400,000. You know, so.
But other counties are feeling it too. It's.
Oh, I get it. And, and unlike Mr. Stroud, I have kids, I have a five-year-old, I have one that just graduated last year, I have one that is a sophomore, and I have one that's in eighth grade, so I'm in all the schools. All right? And it's very, very big to us. I keep a very kind of close tabs on it, and I get very good feedback about the schools and what's going on there right now, as far as the teachers and all those things, so.
I don't, I don't want to hold anybody up, but if, but after the meeting, if you want to, I can show you where the, where I, where I got all the scores from and where I'm comparing.
You'd more like to show it to me? The, the best thing for you to do, though, is really is to share it with the school board, and probably the person, Jesse Boyd, the superintendent, Dr. Boyd would be the number one person to reach out to.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. And if I can, email me, if it, my, I'm on the website, just find it and just email me, and, and I'll make sure if it doesn't get handled, it does.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get your response.
Appreciate it.
Did you say gradeschool.net?
A greatschools.net.
Great school, okay.
Okay, wait a minute, as a matter of fact, real easy, if you go to Zillow.
No, I, I just went to gradeschool.net and it started trying to download stuff on my, on my computer, and I'm like, whoa.
No, G R E A T.
Got it.
Great Schools. But if you go to Zillow or any one of them, if you scroll down, it'll show you where, what schools.
Yeah.
That, that home is zoned for, and it has the, 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 um, the grades right, when I say grades, the ratings are right there.
So it's, it's an external agency, though, it's not like.
They work directly in, in, in sync with National Association of Realtors. So anywhere you put that, you put in the address, you find the house, whether it's on, whether it's on the market or not, you scroll all the way down, it'll tell you whether it's in a flood zone, it tells you all that good stuff, but it also tells you it's zoned for Sealeston, it's zoned for King George, it's zoned for, it tells you where, where you're zoned, and right next to where it's zoned, it gives you the rating of the schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to jump in, ma'am, there just to say, is the, I used to know, but they have new accreditation now. There's a lot of metrics that go into that accreditation score. In the old days, even whether a coach was a teacher was a point knocked off, and every teacher you had, I mean, non-teacher in a coaching role, you got points off. So there is a lot of metrics that go into that rating. So you might want to look, I don't know what the new metrics are, but there are a lot of metrics you would not, you'd be very surprised at what metrics go into that.
I understand it. I do know they have a different criteria, and my granddaughter is a teacher, and she pulling her hair out, she said, look at this. And I, I even have a printout, and I'm like, oh, Jesus. And this is for kindergarten and first grade, so I, I know they're trying to improve it, but while they're struggling to figure it out, something's suffering.
I'm, I'm sure Dr. Boyd will figure it out.
Yeah, and our, our high school right now is considered distinguished. It's out of 100, it's in the 90s, and the other schools are in the 80s. So it's, just by this new system that they have right now, they're, they're considered pretty high, but I'll have someone follow up with you. Okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions, sir? Please.
Yeah, my, my name is, uh, my name is Mark Feeny. I'm on Hoover Drive over in Arnold's Corner, and I'm here to restate the opposition of the people in Arnold's Corner to the proposed building of 121 townhomes with financial assistance available, because we're concerned about, for a number of reasons. One of them is the potential increase in crime. Having high-density housing with financial assistance available will do that. There's a few other reasons. There's going to be drainage, the builder wants to drain his silt before and after the project is done into Lake Monroe, which is right near my house. And also, he's going to build, propose two swimming ponds, literally right behind my backyard. My backyard, my side yard are 15 feet away from that property, so I'm going to be more affected than anybody else since the, the soil, according to the 2019 County Master Plan, is highly permeable and erodible. I'm concerned about it coming into my yard and clogging up my French drain and maybe my septic line. The two other reasons are, we're concerned about traffic at the intersection of Route 3 and, oh, Hoover Drive, I mean, and Route 206. The builder is going to have, they're going to block off left turns from Hoover Drive onto Route 3, and people are going to be forced to turn right and then go down a quarter mile and make a U-turn to go to Fredericksburg or over to the, the stores. So, and then the last reason, main reason is the impact on the school system. So that, and we, there were like five people who brought this up at the May 29th Town Hall, just wanted to restate our opposition to it, and right now, we have over 100 petition signatures opposing it so far. Thank you.
So I don't, I won't speak for everybody, but I will say that in the past, most of us have expressed agreement with what you're saying for various reasons. For me, I, I'm very much against this because of the traffic problem. The traffic problem there already is significant. You throw another 121 homes into it, it, it's going to be insurmountable. The current plan that has been put before us is to use the, the side driveway there next to the sheets as one of their main entry exit points. And I asked the question, well, what does the sheets owner have to say about that? And he said, nothing, it's, it's a right, I'm like, that makes no sense at all. If you park behind that building and come around the building today, you're taking your life in your own hands, because people come flying through there at 30 miles an hour because they got to get that big gulp. But, um, yeah, that's not a good plan, in my opinion. There's other things that I won't go into here, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be a no on that one.
Does, do the other members of the board generally feel the same way?
We haven't changed our minds since the last time you were here, my friend. Yeah, there, there's no one here that's going to vote for that.
Right.
Also, I was here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you got our support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Anna Marie.
Please.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria. I live in Presidential Lakes.
Thank you. My name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Lakes. I want to thank you for your service. Some of you been on the job only 10 months. Two of you been longer than 10 months, but I see that you're doing great things. On the 10th of June, contractors in behalf of the King George County have begun demolition of the old middle school. Well, I'm very happy because my children went there, and they have more, they have lead, they have all kinds of things, and Mr. Davis went there to the middle school, right? Um, and I'm really happy that that happened, and thank you for doing that. Um, I want to know also, what are you going to do with that land? Because I think you also, you know, Mr. Dennis was a superintendent for the last 30 years. He, the superintendent office was in 301, and that building also was bad. And now Mr. Boyd is in that building, there's almost coming apart, the same thing, the middle school. And I would like that you really think in what you, you know, I hated to see Mr. Boy and all the people working in here in bad environment. Um, also, I noticed something, the financial department not coming, they used to have meetings every another month, they say, "How we doing with the finances?" I haven't seen these people and, and hear saying about the, the finances. Also, I afre, I appreciated about the taxes, my taxes already came. As you promised before, the taxes is still lower. That's why a lot of people moving over here, taxes lower and also safe for the community. I asking you tonight also, they made the right decisions for the county, data centers, solar panels, lithium batteries, restocking from agriculture to industrial, are these things really what is best for the county? You are probably thinking about more tax revenue for King George, but I'm going to tell you that industrial activities can lead to pollution, loss of habitat, and increased water consumption, and potential harm to the environment. Converting farm lands can reduce the ratio of food production and negatively impacting the local farmers. Also, I noticed Caroline County wanted the water from the rapahannic. King George wanted the water from the rapahannic from this data center, and Stafford wanted the water from the rapahannic. If you go from here to Fredericksburg, you see the rapahannic is very low. Going south, okay, they have water, but the rapahannic maybe cannot handle so much water that you're taking for these data centers. Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll try part of that. I think we'll probably have to tag team it, there was a lot of questions in there. So I'll, I'll start with the tax part. Um, so we, we definitely want to try to keep taxes low. Um, uh, I've, I've heard people mistakenly say bunches of times that we ran on lowering taxes. We did not run on lowering taxes. We ran on keeping taxes low and fiscal responsibility. Um, we've done a good job of that. We haven't raised taxes in two years, and, um, we've had to, we've used less of the, the general fund to balance the budget than, than some of our predecessors have. There was, in that questionnaire that came out, there was a lot of complaints about taxes are just too dang high, we've got the worst taxes, blah, blah, blah. We don't. Uh, when I read that, it took me five minutes on the internet, and I found out that, looking at six localities, Caroline, Louisa, Stafford, Spotsy, Fredericksburg, and King George, and I could look at others, but I just looked at the ones that are fairly close. Um, on property taxes, we're second to lowest. On personal property taxes, we're second to lowest. The two lowest in those categories are different counties. If you take the aggregate, we're the lowest overall. Um, what does that equate to? If you take, let's say you've got a, a house that's, um, I think I used $300,000, because in today's market, that's actually putting on the low end. Um, your taxes in Caroline County is going to be $525 for the year. Your taxes in Louisa County is going to be 364, Stafford's 823, Spotsy's 805, Fredericksburg is 510, ours is only 487. That's for, I'm sorry, that's for, I'm sorry, a $15,000 car. That's your personal property taxes for a, a car. So, um, yeah, your personal property taxes are relatively low. Um, for a $300,000 house, Caroline was $1,500, Louisa was 2160, Stafford was 2770, Spotsy was 2202, Fredericksburg was 2,400, and we come in at $2,000. So again, relatively speaking, we're on the low end. We're working hard to keep them low. To do that, we do have to bring in some industries. Um, for, for all this, all this stuff that people want, nothing's free. We got to pay for it somehow. We've already talked about how the landfill is, one, not paying for, and two, eventually going to go away. So that leaves us two options. We can raise taxes, or we can bring in some kind of money-making, you know, um, industry. Um, the ones that we're looking at are relatively low-hanging fruit, um, in terms of, uh, um, what an impact they have on the environment. We're trying to work with, uh, data centers that, uh, bring in high, high-dollar value with relatively low footprint and relatively low environmental impact. Now, there are some that we had to be very careful of, you know? We, we told Amazon, "No, we're not taking that." You know, they, they, right now, Amazon has control of the only straw we have in the river. And so we said, "We're, we're not doing that deal." You know, "You're going to have to work with us." And, uh, but the, the environmental impact, using their old cookie cutter, bam, 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 this is how we do data centers, an old plan, it's an old, um, way of doing things. It's, it's impactful to the environment, it's impactful to the, to the, uh, infrastructure in terms of electrical power. The guys that we passed recently, um, Dogren West, they're looking at some of the most modern stuff out there. The cooling requirements are going to be relatively low, the water impacts are going to be relatively low, environmental impacts are relatively low. Noise impacts also relatively low. We've had people complain, "Oh, I don't want that in my backyard." You know, "You don't care, it's not in your backyard. It's about 1,000 yards from my driveway. It's right in my backyard." So those are the kind of things that we're trying to do. Their estimates, and it's an estimate, it may never come out this way, but the numbers actually make sense. In about 10 years at full buildout, they're looking at giving us about $100 million a year in terms of taxes. That's some low-hanging fruit with major impact, and the positive way and relatively low impact on the negative way. So those are the kind of things that we're trying to do. So I hit the taxes. Who wants to hit some of the other stuff?
I'll jump on, you can go with that data center part, just to give a clarification. So Dogren West does not have tax incentives. The Amazon project, if you look up the 2023 Cloud Infrastructure Grant, that basically grants, Amazon's the only one who qualifies at the time, but the big players like Google, Meta, they can qualify. They get a lot of tax incentives back for, um, coming here and bringing their big business. And, you know, there was an article that came out, and there's lots of videos on it, and more people wrote articles about how Amazon announced that they're going to use a lot of AI and robots to replace workers. And, you know, I always think, is that going to be data centers? So are they going to bring good jobs? I mean, those are all questions you got to think, because the industry changes. I know back in 2019 is when that $1.25 was set, I was on that board, but it was pitched as a data center building, not a campus, not a campus, so a building. And, you know, all of us, technology has changed since 2019. Our lives have changed since 2019. So I would like to revisit that, because $1.25 is way too low, but that is an incentive you use to lure a company here. There are companies in Southwest, not company, there's counties in Southwest Virginia that are offering even lower rates to incentivize, but those are the areas that have been hit by the lack of, you know, the tobacco and those kind of mining that has gone away, and they have a lot of brownfields, so they, they have a big economic impact to the industries that are left. But, you know, one of the things in the future, I'd like to look at our regulations, part of the reason in the 2023 ordinance on zoning overhaul, I pushed to have the data center, um, special exception permit, and the solar products and battery storages, so that we could look at each project individually and not by right, because each project is in a different area, has a different impact on watersheds. Dogren West is in a totally different area than Green Energy Ventures or the Amazon project, so you need to look at those individually. And Stafford just passed new regulations and saying, "We were the first to the special use exception, but Stafford and Spotsy are beating us in some of the regulations, and we, maybe we, we need to revisit those at the beginning of the year." And concerning the old middle school, you know, the best thing is to hold on to that land to be able to do something to create a campus idea, but we got to come to an agreement. What are the priorities of the schools? They're looking at a VOTEC building now, based on numbers over in an elementary school. And so you've got to hold on to that property, because you can create an interior road there, that property is very unique. But, you know, in 2019, I had this grand idea to make this infrastructure project to try to start a conversation, and it went to committee, and I think Mr. Shaw was on that committee, and then it died, because nobody wanted to do anything for it. My idea was to bring it up, I, I found all the properties the county owned, mapped them out, to basically, so we could have the conversation, make a decision, and unfortunately, the conversation never went anywhere, but with the new board, the conversation is moving somewhere. So that would make my happy after the end of, uh, another term that, that it finally came to fruition. So, you know, it, unfortunately, there was a lot of just doing things the way to differ, and I'll give a small analogy to end, is I've been on the board eight years. My first two years was the old way, and then COVID happened, and it's been more complicated and difficult and moving faster ever since then. And, you know, we have challenges that were not addressed for years. If you go back in the history books, it shows that we left buildings to be abandoned back to the Civil War, so it's a King George tradition. So we kind of have to fix the tradition and make sure we maintain our buildings and move forward, preventive maintenance, money for operational costs, and this board is willing to have that conversation, so I'm happy about that.
Right, a little tiny bit. So this kind of ties into that, and what Ms. Bender was saying, when we stepped in, there, there, the school board was predicting that there's going to be so much growth in our county and how we're going to be maxed past our schools. Right now, that last year was, they had 80 less kids, and we predicted this to them, that, and I was kind of to the point of maybe COVID year, where people really started moving here, because we still had our freedoms, right? Maryland was getting kind of shut down, but we were still kind of open for business after '20 and '21, so people really kind of moved here. And to me, that was kind of the top of the bubble. And right now, so they had 80 less kids sign up for kindergarten. So the whole, the whole mind that the school board right now is shifting from, you know, maybe you guys are right, and maybe we don't need a new elementary school right now, and we probably don't. So what we're, what, they've kind of shifted to the, the CT building, which is, you know, the old shop building over by the, what used to be the high school, the middle school building, used to be shop class, things like that, kind of bringing those things back, whether it be nursing classes, beautician classes, working on cars. And that stuff is important, all right? So that's kind of our main focus. The reason why is, I look at King George as kind of like you look at the country, like if you don't provide education on how to do those jobs, and you got to outsource that to other countries to do that work for you, right? Build computer chips, whatever, you got to keep outsourcing. If we don't have people here that can, that can beauticians, that can plumbers, electricians, things like that, we've had kids, this year, we had 10 kids that are going directly from high school into a job, where they'll be making $60,000 a year as an electrician, starting out already. So it, it's starting to build up and starting to work. So we want to create those avenues where, you know, automotive care and all those things. And so that's what that building is probably going to end up looking like, probably not going to be building a new preschool, because the school has backed off on that, that is less than the board, it's not us, but the school board said that's, we're not seeing that being the need, so the CT building is probably what's going to get built next. And I'm, I'm 100% behind that, and, you know, teaching, I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of people, not speaking to people here, but there's a lot of people in their, in their 20s and 30s and stuff who don't know how to do anything. They got to call someone to do everything, you know? And so there's a good living to be made in people who know how to do their craft and do their trade properly, so, and we want to have a productive community that can do that, too. Good.
Thanks, sir. So, um, yeah, I agree with everything he just said, that if we want to invest in our future, invest in the county, having a trades school and being able to do that is huge here. Um, so for the kids that graduate and go off to college, they may come back to here, chances are, they're going to go somewhere else. Okay? So it's like, you know, there, there are some jobs here for college-educated kids, um, but there are a lot more jobs for skilled trades, and, uh, I think there's a lot more jobs everywhere for skilled trades. So the other thing is, by having skilled trades here, it'll be a lot easier to get businesses using skilled trades here as well. Um, so that, that's, uh, investing in, in ourselves and investing in our future. Ms. Anna Marie, you brought up so many things, you probably asked questions for everybody here tonight. Um, but the, you mentioned one thing, the finance briefing. Yeah, we don't get the finance briefing. So the, uh, treasurer is an elected position, and we can't tell the treasurer what to do. Uh, the citizens do, so whenever the election comes around, that's when you have the opportunity to tell the treasurer what to do. We have, um, you know, you, you go back to the meetings, the, for the first meeting, the treasurer came in, and I found out we had $32 million sitting in a checking account, and, um, you know, it kind of started then. And the county, the county's, uh, financials, finances haven't been managed the way that I would manage them, I can say that, and they're still not being managed the way that I would manage them. Um, and if they were, then we'd be making a lot more money on our money. Okay? So, um, I look forward to one day being able to go in great detail on that, but, um, but we're not doing that. So the rapahannic being low, just, just to touch on that, um, everything is low. The rapahannic's fed by water and springs from the state, and it's just like we've been, I mean, my ponds are low, everywhere is low right now, because the water's just not coming into it, um, contributing to the fact that, you know, people take water out. Um, the agriculture, data centers, solar, and the battery storage versus agriculture. So, um, I like, I moved to King George because, you know, I'm from the country, I like living in the country, like being out here, and that's what people come here for. And we, we do want to try to keep that, that's another reason why we're not trying to build new subdivisions and, and, and do that. So, um, I, it's not my problem to solve the housing problem, I don't see it that way, it's my problem to solve the money problem. And, uh, agriculture, though, and I'm a lover of agriculture, you know? I have raised cattle, grow hay to feed the cattle, um, I love eating beef, I love, I love agriculture, but the challenge that we have with King George and agriculture, the difference being whenever George Washington and, and those guys lived here, is, um, they didn't have the same demands that, that we face today, and, um, they sure didn't have the need for tax revenue and all those stuff. But whenever, um, we built these firehouses and firetrucks, and the more people you get, you need more ambulances, all these kind of things, and there's, those are things I'd like to talk about, but, um, that's where the, the money problem comes in. But agriculture, the money's not there. Okay? We, we spoke about this before. The challenge we have with keeping agriculture here is, you know, go to the farmers, and, and there's just not enough money in that, okay? I'm not saying there's not money in it, but the thing is, is the government, like in Iowa, the government will pay farmers to grow corn and, and, and then cut it down rather than harvest it. Okay? And why is, why is that, why does that happen? Why does the federal government have to subsidize farming? And it has to do with the trade imbalance. Okay? Because just like us importing, uh, beef in the United States, and I used to know the numbers, and I could get it, the Virginia Cattlemen newspaper, there's, there's newspapers that put it out, but the United States imports millions, millions of pounds, tons of beef. Why? We grow it here, and we export it, but we're importing it. I don't know why we do that. I mean, I, I know why, but it's like, it's frustrating, um, because we're subsidizing another country instead of our own ranchers. Okay? And, and, and those are decisions made somewhere, you know? But the thing is, is here, here in the county, agriculture's going to be very tough in the future, okay? Whenever somebody is, is our citizens that are for, that have these farms or ranches, as they get older and they can't do it any longer, who's going to take that over? It's hard to find somebody that can take that over, and if they want to retire, where's their retirement? So it's easier for them to sell their land and, and cash in and pay for their retirement, medical bills, whatever it is, and whenever they sell their land, who buys it? Developers or somewhere.
I wanted to jump in, I forgot, Ms., uh, Ms. Lovell, I forgot the question on the rapahannic river that I knew the information for. So at the state level, I serve on a couple committees, the Eastern Virginia Groundwater Management Committee and the Rapahannic River Basin Commission, and there was a bill, and I don't remember the bill, Senator Stewart and Delegate Kent both put it in, uh, to study the rapahannic a little better, because there really has no, been no study of all the users, and there are grandfather permits we don't even know about that actually exist, and they're usually farmers that have intakes in the river, and we at least have three of them in this county, there's probably more. But that to be studied, so we really see the impact on the rapahannic river. Who, how much water is being pulled out? What is the capacity of the rapahannic river? Where has the Saltona Slony Zone moved? And that hasn't been done, but it is in process, there is a study being started, so we have had those conversations at those two committees, and it's being done probably, it will probably be done by J-LARC, and I don't remember the acronym, the exact acronym names, or it's Joint Legislative, but it is an independent body. They've studied data centers, they've studied K-12 funding, but they're probably going to be doing it, so it's an independent body. So it is in process, but there has never been an honest look at what the rapahannic river capacity truly is, and should we have all these straws in there, or there should be limits? So that is in process, and unfortunately, a lot of these industrial projects are being passed without that information, so that is something to bear in mind.
Thank you. Pastor Shaw?
Young man, young man, you're next.
James Shaw, Jameis Monroe District. We're going, uh, uh, we're, we're starting the budget process. The fiscal year starts each year July 1st. The results of a fiscal year are not reported until after the auditors finish their work in late fall. So from July 1st starts, um, uh, reported numbers, one does not see until 16 to 18 months later, way too late to do anything. So my question is, when might we see monthly reporting unaudited? This is important, unaudited, and, and that's the issue, I've, I've been told, we don't do anything unaudited, everything's only audited, therefore you're stuck with this 16, 18-month, uh, delay. When might we see monthly reporting, we'll say with the close on the 15th of the month? Back in, um, 1980, I was hired to be a computer person for a small business, and they were doing, uh, budgeting on a yearly basis. And so with my knowledge and computing, we got things and were able to go from a yearly reporting to a monthly reporting. That was in 1983. Uh, that would, my. That would, my math, yeah, we're a few decades behind that in this county, I would suppose.
So are you looking at not like monthly financials, but the 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 budget? The county's budget?
Or are you looking at how we're performing on glide slope with plan versus execution?
I I'm looking at, you know, I I can do this on my on Quicken at home. I run a little P and L and I see budget, I see expense and I see income.
To basically how we're doing on glide slope plan versus execution?
Yeah, 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 both.
So.
So in in other words, okay, so you budget a hundred grand for for a given line item. Well, okay, we'll say a hundred and twenty thousand on a given line line item. So that's ten thousand a month. And so I want to see what the expenses are on a monthly basis to see that you're like over, under, and glide slope as you just described it so that we have an idea what's going on. Okay, are we going to be over budget, under budget, you know?
So I think I can get close. The there are some challenges, but it but that's not, you know, impossible, probably today, because the information is available. It's just the way the county operates is you got three offices that that deal with it, right? And they don't necessarily all communicate, you know, as seamlessly as we would think. But but I think that we're on a path to get there. I know that he just walked in, but the county administrator is, you know, he he has all this information. He could probably whip it out of his pocket right now. but uh, but, um, I mean, but he's working on a solution to help to help produce that. Okay, because I know he's he's guy, he, as a part of his job, he's already trying to answer those same questions and to be able to see it visual visually. And so I know he's working on a solution as well.
Yeah, I know we can, on a monthly basis, we have the, like you said, we've got the the technology, we've got the data that we can provide at least two of those three things. We know what the planned budget is. We know what the expenses are. And talking with Ms. Cobb, when we were debating whether to continue down the path of spending over a million dollars on new financial software versus keeping what we've got, I asked her if we could do exactly what you just said. And well, I asked her predecessor. She said, no, 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 the the software won't do that. And before we got down from the meeting, you know, Ms. Cobb's like, is this what you're looking for? And I'm like, yeah, that's exactly what I'm. So she did in two minutes what I had asked for and was told by her predecessor, no, we can't do that. So it can be done, at least partially. It may end up being a month, you know, late. It may not be like real time. But as you pointed out, it would also be pre-audit. So it'd be very raw. We can talk to Matt, you and I can talk, or we and Matt can talk to Ms. Cobb and see if that's something. How would you like to see it? Post it on the website or?
And Ms. Cobb has it.
Yeah.
The the challenge is, it's not just her information because you need it from the revenue and treasurer. So.
That's why I say we we can do two of those, but the third one is going to require a little bit more coordination and communication. But I think we can probably get there from here.
I can tell you what we do do, though.
He said do do.
But when we when we when we came into the board, there's just some things that we're very surprised about. So they prepare a budget and they wouldn't check that budget again until the end of the year to see if they met the budget or not. Yeah, let me tell you what that does. And everyone's shaking their head because you don't do that at home. I know. But that's the way this county has been run for years, if you want to know how we got here. So what would end up happening was you you have a particular department, I won't mention them because it'd say they had two hundred thousand dollars left and they had a month or two left on their thing. That money would get spent on whatever, just because the old cluse of, well, if we don't spend it, then we got to give it back. I'm like, well, God forbid you give the taxpayer back their money. Or, you know, you can put it towards your budget for the next year. I think you have monthly meetings to go over. So now every month, the county administrator meets with the heads of every department to see exactly where they are to, and we've been very adamant, not just with them, but even with the schools. When I coached at the school, I coached football, I remember the county administrator coming to me, I mean, not county administrator, the the A D company going, hey, is there any equipment, anything you need? We bought. And I'm like, why? He goes, well, we had this money and if we don't spend it, we have to give it back. I go, so we're just going to spend the money. That was my, that's when I started thinking about running for board. This is how we run? Do you do that at home? Hey, hey, honey, we got this extra twenty thousand dollars left over. It's December. We need to spend it. Dude, no one does that. So we we run this like no business does that. So we're we're, you're never going to meet a board that I know of that since I've been who's been more frugal and more tight on the wallets. Not that we don't spend money, but we want to know where everything is being spent. When the school school board comes to us, they don't give us a three or four line items. They break out those line items to say exactly where that money is going to go because we, you know, we want to know. We want to know exactly where your money is getting spent because we owe it to you to be able to answer those questions. So we do have things in place to answer that. But thank you for your question. Young man, please. State your name.
My name is Zach Brewer.
Nice to meet you, Zach.
So the first question, I think she had was, sorry, why, why was the the thing, the? I'm sorry, I'm I'm nervous.
Okay, just calm. It's all right.
The school system grades for the whole county were dropping. I think two years ago, they switched our grading system from a sixty, from a sixty forty to a seventy thirty, which is seventy percent of tests, thirty percent of homework and class assignments. And seven and seventy percent your grade, it's like, that's what's ma, that's what matters. The thirty percent is not doing anything. So when we take the tests, if you do poorly on the test, then your entire grade drops. And even if you get fifty hundreds, that's not an exaggeration, like fifty hundreds in process, which is the thirty, then it's not changing your grade. So I think that might be why the the county grades are dropping. And then when you guys talk about interest or investments, sorry, investments, how do we do investments to get money in in the future? Do we welcome larger businesses like Amazon or do we fund the smaller businesses we already have? How do we invest to get more money?
I'd like to jump in on the school one because, and then somebody else on the other, because I've been passionate. I've been in school board's ears for the last two years and both principals because I hate the seventy thirty system. Because I was sometimes, especially in math, a very bad test taker. But I did all the homework and I tried really hard, but I just froze up. And now I've found I have ADHD. So that's probably why, because I wasn't a big fan of math. I liked history and English and other things. But I think it doesn't reward the kids that do their homework and homework helps you learn. And it's too much emphasis on the test. And it really does affect kids' test grades because you might have some classes where they don't have very many. They have lots of homework assignments, but very little tests. And if you just have a bad test, your grade, and I've seen with my own daughter who's a sophomore's grade, one bad test can drop your cra, your grade like in a second. And I don't think that's right. We do need to, I think, reform that system. And I would come up and sit there in front of the school board and say the same thing. So I'm so happy you actually said it. Because it's good to hear the students actually talking about how this affects them. And it really does affect the kids because it kind of disincentivizes homework. So it's like, why do my homework if I'm only going to get thirty percent for all these homework assignments that I've done? And then I get killed because I do bad on a test because maybe I'm just, I freeze up or I have anxiety when I take a test. And I and I think we need to reform that and honor the kids that do their homework and homework you learn. It's just like, as a coach, you do all this practice and kids hate practice. But practice makes the championships. It makes the winners. It makes the kids that succeed because you have to practice to get better. So I agree with you and and I would wholeheartedly support. And go in front of the school board and tell them, talk to them how it affects. I see it how it affects the CGS kids a lot because, and I'm just using them as an example because I can talk about my own kid, is that, you know, they're high achievers and their coursework is more rigorous because it's supposed to be setting you up for college. I mean, my son who did the program said he did well in college because CGS was so hard in high school, college was a little easier. But it affects them tremendously because they have lots of homework and then they have a few tests and it knocks it down. So that from my experience, I see it day to day when you look at Power School. But, you know, I agree with you. And you're middle school, I'm guessing?
Yeah, I'm middle school.
Okay. Thank you so much for speaking.
I'll say one more thing about the what you're talking about is so, and I've talked to teachers. And so the the big thing around here sometimes is like, well, the the teachers leave because they're not getting paid enough. It's not accurate. And there may be some. But the what that the seventy thirty thing does to teachers, it gives them the inability to be creative. And that's what teachers, that's what teachers, that's their skill set, is to be your creative way of you translating information to students and teaching them how to learn. And when your focus is just around preparing them just to take tests, it takes, teachers lose all incentive to be creative. And it really, the reason why they got in their job to begin with. And and they will go find somewhere else to do it. So there there are people that lead just because of culture. So it's not just affecting kids. It's also affecting the the adults who have to teach you because they get bored too. You know, it's it's it, but that's not an us decision, my friend. But thank you for bringing the concern up. And we'll speak to them on that, too. Mr. Stroud?
Sir, whenever you talk about the investments, we do not, the county does not invest in businesses. So whenever you mention about the data centers or small business, the county does not use taxpayer money to invest in businesses. It's, uh, somebody else's job to invest in the business. But it's what businesses we want in the county is, that's the the investment is investing in the county that is going to attract the business. So what what we mean by that is to get a business here, for a business to come here, it's like, why come to King George instead of going to Texas or Oklahoma or Carolina? Okay, and businesses, thank God, we're in a capitalist society. So businesses are in business to make money. They need to go where they're going to make the most money. So and the more money they make, the more revenue the county gets because they pay taxes on that. The businesses that are here that, how do the businesses or how does the county make money off of business? Okay, and and I'd really be interested in how many people here know the answer to that. Because the way that the county makes money off of businesses is based on the real property that they pay. The county doesn't make anything off the wages. So the the companies that are here that are providing services to Dogren, let's say, because they're making, they make probably, those are probably the highest wage earning businesses in the county. Okay, or defense industry. Some of them are Alaska native owned. Okay? And Alaska native owned, by law, they have to send so much money back to Alaska. That money doesn't stay in the county. And if they are a services industry, we're not getting money off of the money that the businesses make. Okay? We're getting money off the computers, if they report the computers they buy, the furniture or the real estate taxes. We're not making Zippo off the employees. Okay, if the employees live here as residents, then they're paying taxes. But since it's been established that sixty percent of the employees that work at Dogren, at least sixty percent, do not live in King George, we're really not making any money off them. So where we need the money is the businesses that bring hardware are real property. Okay, the those companies are data centers. Data centers bring the most real property. I just use an example because that is the most real property, the most expensive real property that you can get. Businesses like, um, Total Machine, that's happens to be in my district over industrial industrial area, they bring that very expensive equipment. Okay? That they pay on that real property because we tax it. But that's how we make money.
Well, talk a little bit about where we invested, what we have invested money into, though.
Oh, okay, so.
For to make money.
Man, you're really putting me on the spot here, ain't you? So the the county is not, and you're talking about where the treasurer's putting money?
Yeah.
Okay, so the county hasn't been investing money smartly. The county pays, the county pays, you, the taxpayer, pay for an investment firm that tells the county, the treasurer, where to invest money. And that money hasn't been invested. As we already called out, we first came into office, it was the first meeting the treasurer came in and briefed us, where we said, wait a second, why do we have this much money sitting in a checking account? From there, so different things happened and a few months later, months, while the interest rates were going down, um, nothing was happening. Months later, we get told, okay, ten million's invested. Well, that sounds like, oh, wow, whoopee, ten million. That's a third of our money. Why aren't they investing money? Well, we can't invest the money because we may need to pay bills. No, they're not doing a good job. They're not doing a good job communicating. If this county, in all the years it's been in business, if one office can't talk to the other and say, hey, how much, how many, what are we going to owe next month in bills? And they didn't know that? That's insane. Okay, personally, I would have fired people. Matter of fact, I told people I would have fired them. I just couldn't because they were elected. But the thing is, is people that really should have been fired. And it's and it's, you know, the county citizens, the ones that need to fire people in that place. And now, of course, county administrator, we got a great county administrator taking care of business. But the thing is, is the 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 finance department knows what they pay out or what has to be paid monthly. And today, there were some changes made as as Mr. Davis has already addressed. When we first got in office, the person who was in charge of finance really didn't have a clue. Didn't have a clue. Go back and watch it. You'll see they didn't have a clue. They were totally jacked up. Today, we have a great finance department. The county administrator's got a really super job there as in as other departments, and they are doing a really phenomenal job. And so they can project really well what our bills are due each month, and then they could tell the the treasurer. So the treasurer then says, okay, we got this much money. And and so they invested ten million. And then there was some, um, we call it crawfishing because going backwards, that happened. And, um, he had the credit union come in, that's where our money's at, come in and explain how, oh, well, now, now we're going to put it in this money market, which is a good thing. Which is a good thing. It should have been in a money market all along, in a high-yield money market. But now it's like, we're supposed to be really excited because you got money in a in a money market? Well, I'm happier about that, but I'm still not happy. And there's just some things that I really shouldn't talk about here. But that's the way the money, it it needs to be better. It needs to be invested better. I would, I would be doing things differently if I was in charge. I can say that. But it's better than it was before we got here. What blows me away is that out of all these years, nobody that is set in this dais was had the experience, the knowledge or whatever to realize it, ask the question and do anything about it. We lost millions. We're still losing, but at the time, we lost, as a county and citizen, we lost millions of dollars that could have paid, could have paid down the debt without losing anything or could have been used to build that infrastructure. I'm passionate about it. Thank you.
I want to, before we move on, I want to go back to your question about education, if I could, real quick. So Ms. Bender talked about sixty forty, the forty percent of your homework, that does encourage you, you know, when it comes, when it counts for more of your grade, it encourages you to do more homework, which guess what? That prepares you for the test, right? I want to issue a challenge to you guys as scouts. Just, I told you before, I was an assistant scout master, you know, and I know that they're teaching you leadership. I want to challenge you to be a leadership in your school, not just in your troop. Ms. Bender talked, or I'm sorry, Mr. Davis was talking about, you know, teachers having fun and actually being creative. You know, my son's a middle school math teacher up in Stafford, and he gets reviewed periodically, you know, by the principal. And she came to his class several times in a row and he's like, should I know something? Am I getting in trouble? And she's like, no, why? And he said, well, you keep reviewing my class. And she started laughing. She said, the rules say I have to review X number of classes in a month. It didn't say who I have to watch. You're a homeschool kid. You were not an education major. You're a math major. Everything about you is non-traditional. And the way you teach your class is very creative and very non-traditional. This is the most fun I have all day was watching your class. So he gets to be really creative with some of his classes because those kids pay attention and listen and learn and and he can have a blast with them. Some of them are a little bit more like you sitting here tonight going, oh. So be a leader in school, you know, set the example, pay attention to the way you are tonight. Y'all been awesome tonight. And I really appreciate that. Do that in school and encourage your friends to do the same.
Hello, I'm Sean Palavota.
Hello, I'm Sean Pavlota, running for office in the James Monroe District. I'd like to start off by saying how grateful I am for this revival of the board. A definite change in the nature from what we were before and I couldn't be more proud of all of you. I went to school with Billy Davis. I never, never thought you'd be the chairman of the King George Board and I'm
Me either.
I'm very proud of you. Glad my friends up there. Ken, I was just thinking about what you were just saying and how much it relates to everything the county does. And, you know, we were talking about taxes earlier and we're in great shape on taxes. We, we kept the taxes lower. I think of it as being in a race. You know, when you're running in a race, you're not looking behind you to see how far away you are. We worried about getting the best time and I'm excited. I want to keep the taxes as low as they could be, maybe even lower if we could. And it makes me think of the service authority and Kathy, you, you brought that service authority around. You've done really well and it's heading in the right direction and I want to keep going that way. I got some ideas on that too and I hope to contribute. One, one thing that just happened recently that, that stuck out in my mind is we get unfunded mandates. And this is for, for people who don't know what that means is somebody in Richmond has an idea and they say, you guys ought to go do it and then we got to pay for it. And I've seen some of those directly just recently. I got a call from the county engineer and he says, hey, you know, we got this thing that we got to do with this pump station and we're going to change it and we're going to, we're going to put it on your property and then you got to maintain it. And the reason we're doing it is because we don't want to add a generator and all the pump stations needed generators and, you know, by moving it to my property, they didn't have to do a generator. And I asked him about what it's going to cost, it's going to cost about $100,000. And I said, give me a phone number of somebody. And I sent one email, I called two people and I challenged him on that. I said, you know, why do you want to do this if we're not going to have better service? We're actually going to have lesser service and we're going to have to pay $100,000 to do this. And they came right off it. They came right off it. So the question to you is how do you, how do you battle some of these, how do you battle some of these things? And if, if a better way, if there's a way to save money and make the water bill cheaper or make their taxes lower, are you guys willing to support it?
Well, I guess it would depend on the idea. And I know with what you were talking about with 12th Street Pump Station, that goes back to a 2018 consent order. And we had three consent orders, one we just found out about at the beginning of the year that unfortunately the former general manager signed and didn't really communicate to us. But that has been resolved, which is awesome. But that consent order has, the last parts on it were pump station, they were very difficult. There was your into your property, there was another property that only it's Rick's on the river, it hasn't been used as a restaurant for several years, it, it has one owner. And so DEQ did, is allowing us to, to do some things there where we don't have to bring it to, out of the floodplain zone. But it's, the last six things are very unique to the properties, including another one in Fairview Beach that's very unique. So they're very challenging and Mr. Bryce Young has been working very hard over the last year and a half trying to resolve those in a creative way with DEQ. So I know for myself, I made friends with everybody at DEQ and it's having those relationships at the state level to try to say, hey, you're, you're funding, and I bring this up all the time at many of the meetings I go to, you, you, you have these great ideas, like you said, and then you want us to fund it. Well, why don't you start helping us funding? Or, or the FEMA things that are coming down for the service authority, like the PIF regulations, that is important, but where's their skin in the game? You want us to pay for it all the time. And you talked about fixing the water bills and that's very complicated. And it honestly goes back to, I think it's 2008, when the board of directors at that time decided to structure the bill the way it is. And it's not really properly structured. There's no commercial rate, there's, there's inappropriate things about, not inappropriate, but the wrong message with the debt fee because it's operational costs in there. So I know Mr. Hamilton, I, we gave a long list to him, Norm and I, when, when he came on about things he needs to continue that we were doing. And one of them is possibly a rate study to look at how the bill should be structured and what kind of rates you could do, maybe higher commercial rates as over residential rates. And it's very complicated and that's something we'll look forward. But unfortunately, you can't fix 30 years in a year and a half. It has to be a process and it has to be a new look forward. And it's in a process, it just doesn't look like at the moment, but it is, it's step by step and step. And the number one thing we had to fix was our relationship with DEQ because it was pretty bad. And they kind of alluded that they were ready to pull the plug where they would bring in, if we had not chose to agree with them, they would have brought in their own operator and it was their choosing. So, you know, I mean, you don't want to be in that position, but we've worked really hard over the last year and a half to make them be positive towards us and see that we are trying to do forward and maybe help us with some funding, like improvements at Dogren that we could make money off of. So it's a process, so whoever wins the election, to be part of our group, to try to continue that process and step by step fixing it. Sometimes the race has to be won by the practice and it's incremental. And what I used to tell kids all the time, don't care about those little meets in the beginning because that's just medals, you take pictures for Instagram. But it matters what at the end is the state championship. And I see Cheryl here, who was one of my runners a long time ago, she knows what I'm talking about and the nicely, so I coached all three of their daughters and they were on many teams that went to states. And it was always about what you get in the end. And in the end, people forget about how you got there unfortunately, but it's what we do in the end, it's just bear with us for the process.
So I think each one of us brings something different to the table and then, you know, Mr. Collins wasn't able to be here tonight, he, he brings something to the table as well. Each one of us has a different skill set, a different mindset. I think one of the things that makes us work together successfully is that we are open-minded, we're willing to listen to one another, we're willing to listen to, to other ideas. All of us knows that none of us is the smartest kid at the table. You know, we're, we're willing to listen to other people and, and take in ideas and, and question. You say it's always been done this way. Why has it always been done this way? Does it make sense? Is there a new way? Is there a better way? So if you've got some ideas that'll work, heck yeah, bring them dude, please. Don't wait till you get elected and I hope you do, but don't wait till then, let's hear them now. You know? So that's all I got. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Thank y'all for bringing the baby. I know y'all been shushing all night, but there is no sweeter sound in the world than that laughter. Thank you so much. I appreciate you sharing the time with us.
Sure. You're asking the wrong, you supposed to ask him, but
Thank you.
But ma'am, you're next. Okay. No, after you, go ahead, D I C or you can come in next.
Well, I want to thank you to Mrs. Bender for, and all of you for hiring Mr. Dan Hamilton as a general manager because the service authority been in chaos for 50 years, longest I live in this county. But thank you all of you for that, okay? For hiring Mr. Hamilton, for listening to me.
That's why we did it, we were listening to you. That lady back behind you had her hand raised first, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you so much for coming. I, I tell you Stan, appreciate you being here.
She's allowed me to take her space really quick. I just want to make one quick thing so I can take the baby home. My name is Cheryl Childers. I am a member of the Oakwood Estates Neighborhood. And just an idea to throw out, I know we've had a lot of conversations tonight about the school board and the school and I see you all as the head of our county and I want to thank you for your service. And I wanted to start with the idea that maybe if we had one member of some of those other committees, like the school board that can show up here and answer some of those questions and if not answer them, at least take them back to those boards so that the communication is streamlined. And I'm not sure if we've done that in the past and maybe it didn't work out, but is there a reason that we don't have representation from other boards joining here? And in the same way, one of you maybe rotates and goes to other boards so that the communication is streamlined?
That's a great idea. We just started this, this year. We started off real small with like onesies and twosies over at the library and, and Ms. Southall, the director of community engagement said, hey, you know, I can help you with that. And so she started advertising and the last board or the last meeting, we had people sitting in the floor, there were so many people. So that's a neat idea. Yeah, we'll take that on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Haley Jobin and I will also be very brief. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm the executive director of Mental Health America Fredericksburg Region. And we have a lot of services that we offer here in King George as well. I do a lot of our data tracking and I see that our numbers here are not as high as some of our other counties for some of the services that we offer. But we do present signs of suicide in both King George Middle and High School. We are also working with the county schools this year, the middle and the high school again, to help provide therapy sessions for at-risk students. So I just wanted to introduce myself and make myself available for any questions that you may have, any kind of collaboration that we can do to assist the county with any other initiatives, mental health initiatives that you may have coming up for the fiscal year or moving into the next school year. So like I said, thank you so much. I just wanted to introduce myself.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you guys so much for being here. I'm Seth Witten. I'm the deputy director of the Disability Resource Center. We are a center for independent living. It's a nonprofit, supporting advocacy organization for people with disabilities run by people with disabilities. And I don't actually have a question, but much like my nonprofit colleague who just spoke, wanted to say, I'm here to let you guys know that we see numbers, we do home modification grants. There's a wonderful story, I was talking to Jonathan Franklin from the Department of Social Services earlier and there was an 83-year-old woman who was hauling her own water because her well had dried up. And I was just amazed by how people in this county came together to get that woman a well, but then the next thing she needed was a walk-in shower. And so it was just really neat to be talking to Jonathan, go, I think I know who we're talking about. And we put in a walk-in shower for her in the last few months and we don't see as many as we're doing, even in Caroline, certainly in Spotsy. And so please, 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 if you know older adults, folks with disabilities who could use ramps, who could use walk-in showers, we've got grant money. We were just awarded a $1.2 million hug grant this year to come in with an occupational therapist and do things to help prevent falls. So please, I'll make sure that I email each of you my contact info and we'd love to hear about any needs that you're aware of.
Thank you. If you're speaking with Jonathan Franklin, you're speaking to the right guy.
Yeah, yeah.
To get it done, so thank you. And you may, please email me, just it, it's on the website, just email me so I have your contact info and I can get you with the right people too, okay? Thank you.
And you may want to focus one of those ramps and stuff for Sully. I mean, because he missed.
It's not that short.
Man, I had, I had something based on Sean's comments. And so Kathy, you spent a long time answering Sean's question regarding the service authority and so forth. But what I was interested in hearing is how you were going to answer the question or how you're going to respond to him and how we're going to pay for these things? How are you going to keep the taxes low and how we're going to pay for those things? You mentioned the DEQ funding, but you know, like, how in 2030, 2035?
So you'd like to know how these improvements were going to run. Well, first, we needed to do the reports to give the accurate data of what we needed, like the improvements at the Dogren wastewater plant or the Oakland Park decommissioning and the Purple Pipe, the Hop Yard. You need prices to go out for grants. We didn't have accurate data. You need the accurate data to go out and apply for grants or to apply for funding or to update. I know I was a big proponent of this and everybody's been working this, the school board, Mr. Smolnik, the finance staff have actually coming up with a long-term CIP so that you have, I, I call it the menu for when developers come, they know what the county needs, we're not pressuring them. These are the needs. Culpepper does it very successfully. When they have an economic development project come in, they have their list of CIP and it's sort of like the Christmas wish list, but they know what's important to the community. And I've spoken to the economic development director in Culpepper and he says, when they come, I tell you, you want to be part of our community, this is what the community needs. Don't offer us things we don't need. Here is our list, it has been voted on. Here it is. We need a more robust CIP. We've known that for years. We're, I know Mr. Smolnik is working on that. But you ask about funding those service authority projects. DEQ is so, so wanting us to apply for grants, especially for the sludge hauling, because that is a concern in this area where to do the sludge. But Dogren has to be upgraded to do so. So all we have to do is we take the data from the Bowman Engineering Report and then we put it into grants. So this is how much we need for this and this is how much we need for that. We did get the bond to fund some of those needed improvements right away, if that is the choice. But I know Mr. Hamilton has been going to grant workshops to learn and to know what's available, but it, it, it's, sometimes it's not a sprinting race, it's a middle distance race or a distance race. It's, there's a process. So we, you know, those businesses do bring in, maybe if, like Dogren West, they're giving us a water tower, they're making sure it's working, that they open up other opportunities with their revenue. But I do come back to something my colleagues in Prince William and Loudon told me when I asked them about what they should have done with the data center money when they first started. One of the biggest things, especially from the chair of the Loudon County Board of Supervisors, she said, Kathy, what we didn't do, and I, I know I've mentioned this in another meeting, is pots of money. We allocated some of those data funds in operating expenses, service authority upgrades. And we did it and we invested, we put them in accounts that invested money, but it made sure we had those funds. Because one of the things is they had to do in their data center journey is they had to raise their taxes because they realized it was like Oprah in her car. You get this money and you get a school and you get this. And you, they didn't budget for operational costs, upkeep. And they're like, oh, oh, what do we do now? We maybe didn't do what we should have done with the data center money. We were just spending it everywhere. So that's one thing we need to do so that whatever we billed with the money we get, the service authority, we take care of that. You could have funds that earns interest and that's another thing, going back to Mr. Stroud. There is money in the service authority that is invested with the county that has no, it doesn't make interest on it. It's in the general fund, it still is in the general fund, not making money. Well, the service authority should be making interest off that to help pace down some of the deaths and some of the operational costs. But that's a challenge we're still working on because it's not as easy as one, two, three. Did I answer your question enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the benefit to having somebody that's got a lot of experience on things and been able to address those issues. And I appreciate you doing that. So some of, some of us members that have been on the board are much shorter time, we have an approach. And we welcome your addition to the board, sir, Sean Pavlota. I can tell you that what we're focused on with this board and hopefully Mr. Pavlota is solving our future problems. There are problems that exist today and, and those problems aren't going away tomorrow, but what we need to be focused on is our, the, the future. We're going to deal with tomorrow, we're going to deal with next year. There's no ignoring that, okay? But it's solving the problems in the future that take, you know, that's the smart moves. So whenever you look at, people use data centers and somebody who may or may not be in the audience tonight said, well, how much money is enough? How much money is enough whenever it comes to data centers? Well, you know, I may not be able to tell you how much money is enough, but I can tell you how much isn't enough. And, you know, we can't rely on and don't rely on Amazon. You know, Amazon could be building already, they're not. So the thing about a data center, and it was, it was mentioned earlier, Mr. Solins mentioned $100 million a year, that's not every year. Okay? That's the first year, whenever they do the full implementation of the equipment, you have to buy all that equipment, right? And the money comes in on, on the, on the real property. That's the servers, the server racks, the wiring, the cabling, all that stuff that goes in there. And we have limited visibility of what they really spend and you heard me ask this in the past, we need to, you know, try to focus on that. And you heard me ask this in the past, we need to, you know, try to focus on that. But that money's going to go down until they do a refresh. Right now, and they're focusing on a five-year refresh and that's pretty typical of the industry is a five-year refresh. But that's one data center. So we need to be smart in what happens to the money. I may or may not be around then, but I'm going to be in the county. So I'm concerned of who is sitting in this seat in the future and, and what happens to the, that we're not spending more than we make. And what we make is invested. Because if we're smart and we, that money comes in, we have a plan for it, but it gets invested smartly, then we could pay down the Service Authority, we could pay down the debt, we could, you know, I believe we could wipe out taxes, okay? I believe that and still be to the good. Now, what happens if we did, if we did wipe out taxes? You think our property value is high right now? It's going to go up a lot higher because if people can come and live somewhere where they don't have to pay taxes, okay? That's going to be huge. So King George is a place to be. You know, I don't, I don't know about social media, those other issues and things that go on, but so, but King George is a place to be. And that, and people do know that. Whenever they try to escape here, and that's why the property values are what they are and they're going to continue to go up. We have to solve the problems of the day while we're solving the problems of the future. Thank you.
So we're about a half an hour past what we advertised. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to ask a question? We don't want to just shut it down, but Mr. and Ms. Nicely, y'all got a question? R and Tudy, y'all got questions? Matt, I know you came in late. You've always got questions.
Any questions?
Just a quizzical look.
Answer any questions?
I think everybody else has had a turn at the mic. So do y'all want to do any kind of closing remarks?
I'll say a couple of things, just, just to give you an idea. So, you know, we got, there's probably 56 comments for people on email of speaking at this thing and I can go through them. One says, we're a rich county, you need to raise taxes. The very next one says, we need to lower taxes. The next one says, we need to raise taxes. It's just, you're not going to make everybody happy. The other one says, you know, you need to rebuild Ralph Bunch School and you need to do this, you need to do this, but you need to keep my taxes low at the same time. Thank you. I mean, you know, so just to give you an idea of just some of the stuff that's going on right now, you got Ralph Bunch, $10 million to be renovated. You got a CT building that's going to cost probably somewhere about $15 million. You got the old courthouse, which we don't know yet, just probably somewhere between 10, about $10 million to refurbish. New fire stations, $10 million. We have the old courthouse, the CT building, Historical Society needs the property, we have Service Authority. So you're looking at, it's a lot of money, right? So these are all the projects and every one of these projects on here is near and dear to somebody, right? I'd love to redo the Ralph Bunch tomorrow. It's a historical building. I love history. I'd love to refurbish this courthouse. I'd love to build the new CT building. We need a fire station in Dahlgren, you know, and the Service Authority. I want to lower all the water bills. I'd love to pay off the debt and take care of all that stuff for everybody. But there's a lot on here. It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of responsibility. And this has nothing to do with just the everyday expenses of funding for the schools, the staff in the county, the staff at the firehouse, the staff at the police department. All of those things dip into the pool of money. And you have to make, you know, make wise decisions on where we're going to, where that money is going to get divvied up and what projects are going to be most near and dear and to our hearts, right? I mean, our goal overall, because someone put on here, what's your overall goal and vision for the county? And we've talked about it a lot, so I'll take a couple of minutes. You know, one thing we want to do is if we can refurbish this old courthouse, we'd like to move all the government facilities that we have into one location. So when you come to the school board, oh yeah, I need to go pay, over here and pay this bill, I need to go, everything's right here. You pull in the parking lines, right here, you can take care of everything. But that's also big for us because we'd love to get the school board out of that building over there, not just because it's a bad building, but because it's such a prime piece of property. It's in the heart of King George. Everything we do is in Sealeston, which is people come across the line, they don't spend money in King George, they roll out and leave. We need something in the heart of King George where, whether it's a big fairground, whether it's, you know, where we can hold events, things like that, whether it's a, you know, a field house, which we've been talking about since we got on the board. You know, just something for the community in the heart of King George to really drive it. You know, there's been things that people have talked about, like raising food tax and raising meal tax and stuff. There's things that I'm against those things. I'm against those things because, like Happy Dance Coffee Shop, right? You know, my wife owns a coffee shop there. They offer something to King George residents that they don't have to drive all the way to Fredericksburg to do. So what's wrong with us offering, having things, these small businesses, Galleys is a small coffee shop, but people meet there, they congregate there. Uncle Dave's, people meet there, they congregate. That's what King George is built on. You remember Tom's Snack Bar and Shirley's Country Kitchen and Howard's? The whole town was there. There was the head judge, there was the guy who owned the funeral parlor, there was the guy, the pastor. That's where everybody met and that's where decisions and discussions make, that's what makes rural towns thrive and live. And I just pray that the board going forward keeps those things in mind, that some businesses are just offering things so you don't have to go somewhere else and do them. And there's, we have, we have figured a way to support those small businesses that are offering something that, so you can drive to Happy Dance and have a dance lesson with your kid without driving to Fredericksburg and spending an hour, hour of, an hour back. So just hope that we keep those things in mind. But our goal is to, to make King George a place where not just people want to, where people want to live and thrive and give you, give people that come here a reason to come visit and they're in a reason to stay and spend their money at the end of the day and then go back home. All right. That's it for me. Anybody else want to close? Are we good?
Question? Yes.
Is the public allowed to see the results of that survey?
Of this one? You can have it if you want it. It's not published, it was just handed out to us. I don't know if it was published.
I don't know if it would do any good. I'm just curious if we can see what they.
Sure, we can make that happen. Matt Smolnik's nodding his head yes, so it's on him.
All right, well, thank you. Question?
A lot of people, a lot of families came out, so, you know, kudos to your community director because.
She's awesome.
A lot of kids, a lot of families. I think I probably gave out like thirty firearms, lots.
Come back for the Christmas tree lighting in December. You'll really be impressed. Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you for coming and taking part. We appreciate you too. Thank you.